Welcome to the regular Half Moon Bay City Council meeting of Tuesday, April 18th, 2017. Could I please have a roll call?
Councilmember Eisen?
Here.
Councilmember Kowalczek?
Here.
Councilmember Rhabak?
Here.
Vice Mayor Penrose?
Here.
Mayor Riddick?
Here. All rise for Pledge of Allegiance? Good evening and welcome. The first order of business is a proclamation declaring May 2017 as National Bicycle Month, and I have someone here to receive that. Could you please come to the podium?
Carlene Fodenauer, Safe Roots to School Coordinator for Cabrillo Unified School District.
I'm going to read it if that's okay. Yes. So whereas the bicycle is a viable and environmentally sound form of transportation, an excellent form of recreation, and a way to improve health, well-being, and quality of life while reducing pollution and traffic congestion, and whereas millions of Americans will experience the joys of bicycling during the month of May through social rides and educational and promotional events such as Bike to Work Day, whereas the city of Half Moon Bay supports events that boost community spirit and benefits from the thousands of people who are attracted to San Mateo County each year to enjoy bicycling, and whereas bicycling activities and attractions have a positive impact on the city's economy and tourism industry and stimulate economic development by making the city attractive to businesses and citizens who enjoy the out-of-doors and healthy and active lifestyles, and whereas county recognition of National Bike Month furthers the city's efforts to be a bicycle-friendly community and increases the proportion of residents making some daily trips by bike, and whereas Bike Month aligns with the city's goals to improve health, livability, prosperity, and the environment, and whereas since its inception in 1956, May has been declared National Bicycle Month for each of the last 60 years. That's pretty incredible.
Wow.
Now therefore be it known that I, W. Riddick, on behalf of the City Council of Half Moon Bay and city staff, do hereby recognize May 2017 as National Bicycle Month.
Nice.
I'd like to give this to you and ask if you'd like to talk about what you do.
Yes. Safe Roots to School, we've been doing it at Cabrillo Unified for the last five years, and really it's about enabling more students to walk and bike, or walk and roll, skateboard or scooter, to school more safely. So of course that involves a partnership with the city, which we've really enjoyed the partnership that we've had so far, and we're looking forward to continued partnerships. And I know tonight on the agenda is to talk about the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee also. I wanted to just bring up a couple events that we have going on for Cabrillo Unified for May, which are bike-related. On the 5th, over at Hatch, and I have Jim Ward, our principal from Hatch, with me. Why don't you come on up and join me? On May 5th, we're going to be doing a musical play, kind of teaching students about, it's called "Rock the Block Musical," and so it should be a lot of fun. All students will participate. And then that afternoon, they will have the Bike Mobile, which will come and fix bikes for free. So that's, I think, around 1:45 to 5 o'clock. So that'll get everyone geared up for May 10th, which is National Bike to School Day, which this year we are going to participate in. So Hatch and both CUNYA will participate. That's fantastic. And then there's going to be a Coastside Bike event for everyone to come to on a Saturday morning, and that is May 20th. So we would welcome everyone to come. We're kind of working out the details. I believe it's going to be at CUNYA. We'll have the Silicon Valley Bicycle Coalition come, and they will do some bike skills course, and they'll do a community bike ride as well. But I wanted to turn it over to Mr. Ward, because he's brought along some of the students and their families who bike to school on a regular basis.
All right. I'm going to take my seat and let you go.
Okay. Thank you so much. Thank you so much, and thank you to Carlene. She's a great partner with our school. She literally and figuratively makes life at our school and our community school safer, and she's so supportive and kind, and we thank her, and we thank the city for all you do to help Hatch students. So one of the jobs as a principal that I like to do is be out in the morning and greet students, and I can see, we're under construction right now, but you can see when the kids come in on their bikes, or they're walking, or dropped off by car. And there's two families that I always noticed. One is a neighbor of mine, and one is further up the road in Miramar, who bike to school every day and have been both doing it, they're both 5th graders, and they're both, we obviously are being promoted onto CUNYA next year, and they have biked every day. And I wanted just to bring them up with me, if I could get Hedeto Haro and his parents, Mr. Haro and Ms. Koller, and also the, I know that one of our students is, her dad is here, he bikes with her, Mr. Cusack and his daughter Sarah, and I know she's finishing basketball practice.
Across the street playing basketball.
She's playing basketball next door. She thought she could make it for our meeting, but again, I see these students in the morning, and one of the joys of being an educator and a principal is to see the joy in students' faces, and these students ride their bike to school every day, and you see them, and Mom said to me that she bikes everywhere too, because that's what she does, and I see her around town, my wife and I, hey, that's our neighbor, and she's biking around town with her basket, and she just does it. And this gentleman has been biking with his kids since 2006, and when Devil's Slide was closed, I don't know if you remember the frenzy when everyone got their bikes fixed, I was one of those people, and the traffic on Highway 1, and he talked about how great it makes them feel in the morning, and you can see it, the kids' faces and eyes, so it's a wonderful thing. So I wanted to thank our students and our family shaking hands. Thank you so much. And it's just a nice thing to see in the morning, and to see the bike racks, and Safe Roots to School gives us bike racks, and signs, and cones, and other things to our school assemblies, and great things to think about what kids are learning, great bike stunt shows we've had, so it's been a really great partnership. So we thank you, and thank you so much.
And thanks to the city for supporting bicycling.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so Mayor's announcements of community activities. If it's okay, I'm going to borrow a little bit from Magda's Notes and Quotes, which lays out some interesting events coming up. And one of the events is in honor of Earth Day. You can come on down to, is it City Hall to pick up the compost? Let's see.
Yes, my question is slightly different.
Okay, so on Friday, April 21st, come on downtown to City Hall and pick up free compost. The sooner you get there, the better, because it'll be gone pretty quickly. It'll be distributed on a first-come, first-served basis. We have the Fourth Annual Half Moon Bay Triathlon scheduled for Sunday, April 23rd. So please be aware that cyclists will be on the road from 7:00 a.m. until approximately 9:15 a.m., so use extra caution. And I think that's all I have. I know that the city manager has some updates on the Parks and Rec Master Plan and the Half Moon Bay Library Project, so maybe we can move to those now. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Oh, we've got a few guests, maybe we can pause. Hey, Sarah.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor, Councilmembers. I've got a couple of announcements, and I'm losing my place here. First, I wanted to start off with our quarterly newsletter has gone out, so it should reach or have reached mailboxes. It goes out to everybody on the coast side, so that should be coming, and I think there's some copies in the back there for everyone, a few extra copies, but you should get one, the community members should get one at home over there now. Okay, thank you. Wanted to provide you a brief update on the library. I think that many of you have been out to take a look, and of course, last time we got to look at the webcam and how that works, so you can always go online to take a look, or you can go out and take a look yourself. Some community members like to do that instead. We have spies all over. And then I'm going to ask our Community Development Director, John Duddy, to talk a little bit more specifically in terms of the work that's happening at the library.
So this was, last Friday was an exciting day. We were glad the weather held enough to deal with it, so if you caught it on the website, take a look at it, and you can see the time lapse, and you can see this, but we had the big concrete pumper, and they were pouring basically the spread footings that now will allow us to put the slab down, so this is very exciting work. And it was really interesting, as the mayor, as the former mayor, Rick, identified over the fence, and we were very thrilled that we could get this done, and they're continuing to work. The good news, once again, is, as the video camera, is on schedule, on budget. I was in the construction meeting today, so we're still working through, this last batches of rain over the last couple weeks have not stopped or slowed down really anything at the site, so that's really good news, and so we haven't lost a great deal in terms of the weather, expected weather delays out of this time, so we continue to plug on, and in May should be pouring the slab and the foundation, and then starting up from there.
Councilwoman Kowalczek?
Just a question and a request. So thank you for the update on being on schedule and on budget. Would really like it if periodically we had that on-budget show committed, spent, in total, where we're at in terms of that, and then in terms of on-schedule, sort of a really super-high-level timeline, and you know, we want to keep the opening, yes, the gain chart, but the three bars, right? Really simple. Just like to track on that, so thank you.
We can certainly do that. Thank you. Scott?
I'd like to talk a little bit about the Park Master Plan, and we will be hearing from Scott Phillips, who's from our planning department.
Thanks, Magda, and Madam Mayor, and the members of the City Council. I want to start out by saying that I am really excited about managing this process, and many of you, some of you may have already met, the consultant that the city has selected to sort of orchestrate the Parks Master Plan process, Blue Point Planning. They bring some pretty unique experience to the table in similar communities, you know, going through similar tasks. Just to touch upon the purpose of the Master Plan is really to, through public feedback, establish key park policies and priorities, as well as specific project recommendations, and establish operations and maintenance schedules, and recommended changes to not only our current parks, but you know, possibilities for other parks in the city. The Parks and Recreation Committee, as well as Planning Commission, are going to play an integral role in this process of creating the Parks Master Plan through involvement in the public, as well as review of the draft documents that'll be recommended for adoption to the City Council. This slide kind of touches upon the current status of this project. Public input process is well underway. We've already met with a lot of small groups in the community, individuals, key stakeholders, in logging the public input through that, those meetings. And as much as possible, we've tried to integrate the public outreach process with our BikePed Master Plan that's currently underway as well. We're trying to integrate as much as possible, so we don't, you know, decrease the amount of confusion between the two, and hopefully get as much public input as possible. Survey is live on our website. We've actually, we've created one website for both the Parks Master Plan as well as the BikePed Master Plan, and we've, we're calling it Half Moon Bay Outdoors. So I encourage you all to take a look at that. Maybe we can actually do a quick click over to that. I don't know if I've, we can move the mouse with the pointer there, but. Also, you may have noticed around town, we posted flyers, both in Spanish and English, advertising the website that I just mentioned, this right here, as well as the survey, and then also our upcoming workshop, which is going to be our first public outreach workshop, which is going to take place at the same time as our Parks and Rec Committee next week. Let's see. And then the next slide here just gives you an idea of the timeline that we're on, just to give the City Council an idea of what the next, you know, through the public outreach process, eventually we're going to come back to the City Council for recommendations on, you know, feedback as well, and then ultimately the draft document that's recommended by the Parks and Rec Committee and Planning Commission will be brought to you for review and adoption, probably sometime in the fall and winter, so. And you can notice here on the bottom, we've also included the timeline for the BikePed Master Plan, and there is some a little bit overlap there, but then that'll be a little further down the road than the Parks Master Plan. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any, or any thoughts?
Questions, first half? I think it's super, super exciting. I'm kind of jealous that you get to be right in there doing those projects, you know. It's a great time in Half Moon Bay, and appreciate all the hard work that staff's doing, and the public signing up for appointments to commissions. It's exciting, so thank you.
Our pleasure.
Scott, how many surveys have been received so far?
Good question. Last I checked, so we've been live for about a week now, and we've received around 50. So we're, we need to receive more, so anyone that's interested, I encourage you to fill one out, so.
Great. Thank you so much.
Next on our list is the Earth Day Compost Giveaway, which the mayor already talked about, so we can skip through that. And then I've asked John to talk a little bit about the partnership with the county on Marotta Road repairs.
So again, just a reminder, come out Friday for your compost, and then hopefully it'll be available during the weekend as long as the supply lasts, so you can come and pick it up. Last year, it lasted through most of the weekend, I think, so we'll see what happens this year. So I was happy to find that the county, as of, I think, March 30th, had actually submitted the coastal development permit for the Marotta Road repair, and simply put, this is that piece of roadway here that's, that was falling in during storms two years ago, and was stabilized with an emergency repair. It also, and the reason why we're involved, this is actually county land at this point, but we have asked here at the, at this point with the stream, and is that the Demadio, the name, you'll know, what is, the creek that's running here, and this probably identifies it better, but this is the pedestrian bridge, just as a point of reference. So there was a section here that we lost and needed to repair, so we added that area into and included that with the county project that is now with the Coastal Commission and under review. So we'll continue to give you updates on that, and hopefully we'll get a permit in the near future and be able to work this summer to, or late or early fall at least, into working this through. And this is a great deal for the city, because the county's doing all the design, and they're doing all the bidding, and we just get to tag along and get the work done, and we just pay them for our little piece of that. So it's an excellent partnership, and want to thank the county for doing that. Jessica?
For the report. Yes, we wanted to announce that the 13th Annual San Mateo County Disaster Preparedness Day will be held on June 10th at the San Mateo County Event Center, and various first responders will be there to help people learn how to put together a disaster plan and emergency kit. Some of these flyers are on the table there if anyone wanted to take them. I also did want to mention that we are currently accepting Willing to Serve forms for the Parks and Recreation Commission, and those are due by May 3rd. And the Willing to Serve form can be found on our website, or feel free to email me, and I can send it to you. Thanks.
Madam Mayor, I also wanted to provide a brief update on Kelly Avenue. As you know, we've had some issues there on Kelly Avenue. We had a member of the public comment at the last meeting. Staff has had an opportunity to better, get a better understanding of the situation. We've sent out a letter to the, all of the neighbors on Kelly Avenue explaining what we've discovered, and we'll be scheduling a meeting with the community in the next three weeks or so. We'll allow the community an opportunity to take a look at the letter and better understand some of the information that we've gathered. There are some things that the city is going to try to do to help alleviate the situation, and also some things that the community can do. So I think working in partnership, we should be able to get past this.
Edit for updates?
Hold on.
Okay.
Madam Mayor and City Council, I have some good news to share today. You may remember that last month, we reported that the city received three prestigious budget awards for the current fiscal year 1617 budget, and today, I'm really pleased to announce that we just received the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting from JFAA for our 2016 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, which is, the cover page is right here in front of you. This award is the highest form of recognition in governmental accounting and financial reporting, and represents significant achievement by staff, and I also would like to take a moment to thank City Council for your leadership and support in implementing the highest industry standards in financial reporting, and setting examples for other agencies. And finally, I would like to state that we are committed to continue working with our auditors to further improve the quality of this document in the future. So here's the Certificate of Achievement, and with this, I would like to present the JFAA award to our mayor, and ask her to attach the brass medallion for 2016 recognition.
One more.
Two quick ones. I don't have one of those, but we did issue an emergency coastal development permit today for the State Parks Ranger House. Everything converged, and we've looked at this before. Next slide is how it is right about now. Late February, State Parks made their application. Next slide, please. And we just wanted you to know that we were surprised and impressed that they're actually going to be able to start work tomorrow. They just got their Air District approval as well for demolition, and a number of other pieces came together. So the scope of the project is removing the house, maintaining the foundation where it is, stabilizing the site with fill, and then they will come back for a follow-up coastal development permit. They need to have a biological resources assessment prepared at that point. It will be circulated as would be standard for such a permit, and they will also be looking at the long-term site stabilization, as well as the aesthetic condition of that site. One more slide. We just want to be clear that quite a few things were covered in their preparation. They were always ready at a moment's notice if the house had begun to slip to take care of it, but they, because it hadn't, they were able to do quite a few things, including their sequo coverage, a historic resources evaluation. They will have a historian on-site to document the demolition. They've done lead and asbestos testing, and they have an abatement plan, which is included in their scope of work with their contractor for appropriate containment and disposal. They have a geotech review of the contractor's plans, and they will have onsite monitoring in addition to the historian, they'll have a biologist, and they will also conduct traffic safety. We were really wanting to help them with our notification. You probably saw we did a special edition of our e-news late this afternoon, just to get as much more word out as we can. We encouraged them to do a door drop of neighbors, and they say it will take more than a day, it's going to be a couple days, and they will need to close a short segment of the coastal trail in that area, although there are alternate routes through the Miramar neighborhood. So we think this is a very reasonable approach to getting this done quickly. And I have one last item. We just wanted to help our San Mateo County colleagues get the word out on their sea change project, which is a sea level rise vulnerability assessment they've been working on for about two years. It was the draft of this assessment, which is pretty voluminous, and it's, I'm quite impressed with it. It came out on April 5th. Comments are due by May 5th. We will be looking at the portions that apply to Half Moon Bay, although we have seen them in draft format, so I'm not expecting us to see any surprises for what's coming in this way. I was at a meeting today of the Policy Advisory Committee and the Technical Working Group, which we've been participating in. Supervisor Pine was there. He introduced the meeting. Supervisor Horsley Staff was also present, county staff, and it seemed like every city had a representative in the room. It's been a really impressive collaboration for this project. Very interesting to me, and we'll learn more about this, but a key finding for them was that the three-foot scenario really presented the biggest change that needs to be addressed right away. They also studied a very extreme scenario of six feet, and yes, more things are affected, but the margin is small, so really focusing on what needs to be done to deal with three feet of sea level rise is kind of the marching orders that we got from this report. We have just one more slide. Want to thank our county colleagues and encourage our community members to come to a workshop that they will be holding in this room at Ted Adcock on April 29th, Saturday morning, 10:30 to 12:30. They will have this presentation that I saw today substantially similar to that. It's really helpful for visualizing what this is all about, and explains the methodology. They will also take input, so it's about education and getting more input before their comment period closes. They will have an exercise called Game of Floods, which was developed in Marin County. We have their flyer. We'll put that out on our counter, but also you've probably noticed, we've already We'll put that out on our counter, but also you've probably noticed, we've already advertised their session in e-news, I think it was a week or two ago. So we're, we're really trying to collaborate and continue to do so. And, you know, they're only having two of these meetings. One happens to be coast side, so we're really glad that they're coming over our way. And that's all I have. Thanks.
I just want to say, I so much enjoy hearing from you all, you know, staff about all these issues. The level of presentation that we've had the last several meetings have been really awesome. Good information, good for the public, good for us. I just want to say thank you and thank you for your job well done. Yeah, it's excellent. Okay. Just want to briefly report out from our closed session that there's, no action was taken and nothing to report. And moving on to public forum, I have several speaker cards here and I'm going to start with, looks like Benson Beal? Am I getting that correctly?
Bell.
Bell, Benson Bell.
Just go to the next card.
Oh. And Susan Bell? All right. Good evening.
Little nervous speaking in front of the council. I'm Susan Bell. This is my husband Benson Bell. We've lived on the coast for 34 years since 1983. We understand why the city of Half Moon Bay recently adopted Ordinance Municipal Code 3.88 regarding massage therapist licensing. It will protect our city and neighborhoods from illegal activities. We have been providing massage services and spa management to the Beach House Hotel for the past 20 years. We have hundreds of hours of training and thousands of hours of practice. I should be calm, I'm a massage therapist. Due to the time of our initial training over 20 years ago, it would be difficult for us to verify all our hours of education due to some of the programs not being in business anymore. We also held certifications from the American College of Sports Medicine. We have managed the existing Beach House Spa Services for 20 years. We have always obtained and maintained our certified massage licenses from the city of Half Moon Bay as well as our yearly business license. We have also always annually renewed our establishment license in February of every year. Additionally, our contractors were in compliance with their Half Moon Bay city massage license and permits. We also renew our insurance annually. It caught us off guard a couple of weeks ago on my 69th birthday when I went to the post office and received the newly adopted license requirements. Every February for the last 20 years, we apply for our establishment license. And this past February, we brought in our application fee and received our Half Moon Bay receipt. In April this month, we received the same new licensing info in regards to the establishment license as well. We, my husband and myself, would ask the council to please consider grandfathering us in in recognition of our tens of thousands of hours of practice in addition to our business associates' and establishment license so that we may continue our livelihood serving the Beach House and the coast side residents. We ask that our request, we ask that our request please be placed on your agenda and we thank you for your consideration of this matter. Thank you.
Okay, we'll talk to staff about that, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for your time.
Bill Reagan?
So thank you for this opportunity to speak to you again. I am Bill Reagan. My wife and I have owned a townhouse at 18 Marata Road for the last 20-plus years. Our daughter Amy and her husband Brian and their twin 10-year-olds live on Terrace Avenue. So we're definitely part of the Half Moon Bay community. I'm speaking specifically as a member of the Number Two Marata Road and Casamara Homeowners Association Bluff Erosion Committee. At your March 21st meeting, as you will recall, I'm sure, I addressed you during the public forum period requesting city support for our application to the California Coastal Commission for a permanent protection of the bluff. I explained that the winter storms in 2016 had destroyed 30 of the 33 feet of bluff between the ocean, the coastal trail, and our property. And I described how our homeownership group had received a permit from the California Coastal Commission for a temporary riprap fix. With the support of, the great support from Terry Kaiser and the folks at the State Parks and with the skill of Andreaene Brothers in a bad weather condition, we were able to get the temporary riprap in place and for a time to stave off the rest of the loss. Although right now, after all the waves this year, the riprap is beginning to slip. That work cost each of our 10 homeowners over $50,000 and several of them had to get second mortgages, as you can imagine, to, to pay for that. But all of our members are committed to saving our homes and not letting them fall into the ocean. As I reported, we applied to the Coastal Commission in last September for a permanent solution, including fabric backing, anchoring the riprap and the rock all the way to the top of, of the, to the bluff. And the commission came back with a request for about 20 items, Coastal Commission that is, and we've got almost all of them done. We're actually down to agreeing with the Army Corps of Engineers to remove about 10 square feet of riprap so that we won't be out of compliance with what the Army Corps of Engineers wants done. So we're practically there. And throughout the process, we've kept Brian Lee of your Engineering Department and the Cities Planning Department aware of what we were doing and copies of all our reports. After the meeting on, the last meeting when I was here, Mayor Ruddick very hopefully explained to me that the council could only take action on requests if there was an agenda item. So at your, her suggestion, I sent all of you a copy of what I gave you last time, including the before and after pictures, but I, I know you're familiar with the coastal problem there. So this evening, I'm here to request that toward the end of your meeting where you get to your for future discussion and possible agenda items, that you agree to our request for support to put it on the agenda for your April 16th meeting. We're really urgent about getting this done and we'd love to do it at the, the May, it was a May 16th meeting. We'd love to do it the May 2nd meeting, but I and the other two members of our team are all going to be out of town and won't be able to be there on the 2nd. So, so I'd appreciate your consideration for getting us on the future agenda. Thanks again for-
And you, and you prefer the May 16th agenda?
Yes.
Okay.
That's the, sooner the better, but that's the first one we can make.
Sure. We'll discuss at the end of the meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for your patience. I completely lost your email. I thought I had an email from you and then I went looking for it, it was nowhere. Sorry about that.
I'll be happy to send you another copy.
The next speaker is John Zaba.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm John Zaba. Live at 908 Golden Gate Avenue. I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, but then all the praise for the bicycle people, they're, they're all, they've all left. Bicycle people left. They must have ridden off before it got dark because it's dangerous out there in the dark. And the bike and ped thing and all that stuff, it's all great unless you live on the east side of the highway. I have been to this city council meeting, probably when you got, maybe some of you were city councilmen, the last time I came and complained about it. We have nothing from Main Street to Rousseau-Français on the east side of the highway. We keep building, we have two trails on the west side of the highway and a trail that goes to nowhere on the east side of the highway from Rousseau-Français to the northernmost truck turn for Rocket Farms and no trail.
Did you attend the 5 o'clock workshop on the Highway 1 North Traffic Improvements?
No, I did not.
There's going to be a trail.
There is going to be a trail. When? Will my grandsons still be able to ride it or will they be too old for that? Or will I be too old for that?
We're, we're doing a quick redesign of a portion of it and it's coming back to the council within a meeting or two, so you'll be able to see it.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Glad I could be-
Oh, and we did, I did see this map thing that was on the easels there. Four lanes by us. How can we get across the highway?
No, it's not going to be four lanes.
Oh, okay.
It's going to be one lane.
There's six.
Well, it's going to be, you know, the Terrace Avenue signalization will involve some wider lanes. After that, it's going to narrow back to one before it gets to Grandview so that you won't be making a left turn.
Thank you.
Jeff Corbett.
Jeff Corbett, 366 Metzger Street, homeowner over 20 years. A few weeks ago, I came before the city council to speak in opposition to the proposed hotel conference center complex at the intersection of Main Street and Highway 1. Since that time-
Excuse me, Jeff, is this about the hotel EIR item?
That's about all I'm going to say about it.
Because if it's about that, we have to speak to the item itself, not-
I'm not going to speak to the EIR.
Okay, all right.
Since that time, there's been growing concern within the community about the prospects for such a development and folks are trying to figure out how to express their opposition. At the same time, we've now learned of another proposal of an even larger hotel conference center RV park grocery store complex north of town. A near-perfect bookend to immobilize citizens of Half Moon Bay between the Cameron Complex and about Frenchman's Creek. That said, I would like to encourage the new city council to take a long look at the implications of future development on our precious coast. Some questions to ask. Are we really in the business of building hotels for tax revenue? What does this look like in five years? What does it look like in 15 years? Pacifica, Monterey, San Jose? Where does the tax revenue really go? Does it just turn the engine to build more hotels to get more revenues? Do, question two, do we want to be in the business of operating convention centers? What does this look like in five years? What does this look like in 15 years? New Orleans, Las Vegas? In my own humble opinion, which is incidentally prevalent throughout Half Moon Bay, now with the city council, new city council in place, is the time to put the brakes on new development and if nothing else, watch to see how projects that are already in the pipeline play out in terms of increasing traffic congestion and impacts on our overall coastal lifestyle. To quote the good Mayor Ruddick, "It's a great time to be in Half Moon Bay." Let's keep it that way. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. Sam Rashkin.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Sam Rashkin. I'm from Monterey County. I work as an economic development consultant and a public policy analyst. I've been attending Half Moon Bay community meetings and events for the past five months and I've also been helping some local nonprofits working with the chronic homeless problems, the immigrant workforce, the elderly and at-risk population. As we all know, the rainy season started in October of last year and it's never really completely stopped. This weather's been especially hard on those with the least resources. And I'm here tonight as a reminder that the time to plan for next fall and winter is right now. It's actually last month. And it's not as straightforward as, as it might first appear. They started in Monterey last month and there's been many vocal opponents who show up against each proposed location. Half Moon Bay is fortunate to have an active and strong nonprofit community. There is a Community Homeless Breakfast every Wednesday and Thursday from 7:00 to 9:00 a.m. It's at the Coast Side Lutheran Church at 900 Cabrillo Highway. I'll be there tomorrow discussing plans for 2017 and 2018 fall and winter and I hope you continue to work with them and support their efforts. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sam. Paulette Eisen.
Hi. All right. I went home after the meeting, after the Highway 1 meeting and came up with a couple of suggestions that I hope will be incorporated in the plan going north. One is that, I don't know if anyone's ever brought this up, but the idea of not allowing a right-hand turn from Main onto Highway 1 going north, let's say from 3:00 to 6:00 Monday through Friday, would, I think, help that whole choke point and traffic flow. Because of course, cars turning into there then make it really difficult for anyone on Highway 1 driving north to get across that intersection and, and move into the traffic. So it would be, I think, really prudent to not allow right-hand turns for a specific period of time. The other thing is back to my thing of the turnoff coming south on Highway 1, turning off in that wave, that wave access point onto Frontage Road. If at least we close that off so that Frontage Road ends up being accessible to, essentially, I mean, it's accessible to anybody, but the residents would be the only ones who would most likely use it because it's not going to help flow through of people who are just trying to bypass traffic and trying to use that, that road. And so that way, if that's closed off, then those people who are living in Casa Del Mar will be using Frontage Road to go to Terrace in order to either turn left or, you know, turn onto, you know, turn onto Highway 1 going south. That's it. Those are my two suggestions and I hope people are listening. Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Paulette. Okay, so we're, we're moving on to the consent calendar. I need to pull item 1E because I need to recuse myself from that vote, but I also have a request from member of the public to pull item 1J, which is the Award of Professional Services for the Preparation of the Hotel EIR. So, oh, excuse me?
Yeah, I'd like to pull 1H.
Okay. Recycle. Okay, so the motion would be for items 1A, 1B, 1C, 1D, 1F, 1G, 1I. So if somebody would like to-
So moved.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. So I recommend that we move those items to after the resolutions and staff reports, if that's okay with everybody. Okay? Then we'll do that. So now we have no ordinances in public hearings tonight, so we're moving on to item 3, Resolutions and Staff Reports. Item 3A is presentation by the Sewer Authority Mid-Cost Side.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Per the direction of the council, we've invited the General Manager, Sam, the Sewer Authority, to come and visit with us today. Beverly's been nice enough to provide a presentation, which I think is at the dais for you, and she will be just giving a general overview for the benefit of the community and the council in terms of the way Sam works, the funding agreement, the way the funding works, and then I think introduce a little bit about the budget. So go ahead and turn.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank you very much for the opportunity to come and speak in front of you and I'd also like to apologize in advance, I'm getting over a cold, so I might have a remnant cough or sniffle. Do we have the-
Oh.
So I'm sure most of you know, Sewer Authority Mid-Cost Side provides the wastewater treatment for the majority of the coast side, for those of the population that don't have their own septic, and has been in existence for some time. It's a joint powers agreement between the three communities of Half Moon Bay, Granada Community Services District, and Montero Water and Sanitary District since 1976. And the purpose was basically to create a centralized location for the treatment of wastewater. And there were lots of opportunities at the time and what was decided upon was a central plant with one outfall to the ocean. The boundaries are the consolidated boundaries of all member agencies. And so basically, all the way from Devil's Slide down to the bottom of Half Moon Bay and over to the ridgeline is what we serve. There's approximately 26,000 population, which doesn't sound like much, but that's a very- a very long and narrow pathway, and as was just discussed, there's a lot of traffic there, many times, so getting from north to south can take some time. SAM facilities. There's a question often, what is SAM? What does it own? Basically, it's anything that is owned by the authority, which was outlined in the agreement as the pipeline, the treatment plant, and the intertie pipeline system. And currently, the ownership of the SAM facilities is 50.5% for the city of Half Moon Bay, 29.5% for Granada, and Montero Sanitary District. Those were their original names. I apologize, I should have corrected that. Those have been changed to Granada Community Services District and Montero Water and Sanitary District. Those were their original names, and this language comes directly from the JPA agreement. We have an unusual structure. Most boards, councils have an uneven number, which is great for tie-breaking. We have six, two members from each agency, and to make it even more complicated, the representatives from Half Moon Bay get two votes each. So we actually have six people, but eight votes. So it is possible to get deadlocked in a 4-4 vote, and it does happen. A simple majority is five votes, and sometimes, for resolution purposes and certain restricted reasons, we have to have what we would call a supermajority, or six votes. We don't see those very often. We do have four officers chair, vice chair, secretary, and treasurer, and every once in a while, the secretary and treasurer get combined. So just recently, SAM adopted a strategic plan, which included a mission statement, which is that SAM collects, transports, and treats wastewater for the coast side community in order to cost-effectively protect public health and the environment while maximizing the conversion of wastewater and wastewater byproducts into usable resources. That's a very long way of saying SAM cares about the coast side's environment, whether it be land or water. We also have a vision statement. It's quite long, but most importantly, for SAM and especially talking about the budget, there are a couple of points that I think are very timely in that. The first one is, the second word in the vision statement is that SAM is a collaborative agency. In other words, it's our responsibility to work with the other agencies on the coast side, as well as the residents and the businesses that are here. It's intentional that we use the word "community" in its singular form, because even though we are made up of three different organizations, we see ourselves as serving the coast side. And you can see that in the first bullet point, that we want to act as one organization serving the coast side community, the member agencies, residents, visitors, and the environment. And the second bullet point is very important as well. We've completed an infrastructure master plan for five years, but we also need to talk about funding it and make operational and maintenance changes to achieve zero sewer spills within the coast side area that we serve, and that goes back to that SAM is an environmental protection agency charged with both land and water protection. The vision statement continues. We were asked to talk a little bit about our reserve policies. There are two reserve policies. They were adopted in 2013 in their current form. The first one is an operating reserve, which ensures adequate cash flows so that we can just pay our bills and continue to operate, and it's two months of the budgeted expenses. So for the proposed budget for this upcoming year, that would be $1.46 million. Then we have an emergency repair reserve, which would ensure that we would have enough cash to address a particular emergency, because the rates are set once a year and they're placed on the tax roll, which means, once that happens, if we needed additional cash, we wouldn't be able to go back to the residents and ask for more money, so this needs to get us through. The board did adopt drawing down $500,000 to help pay for the replacement of the Valamar section of the Forest Main that has not been replaced. So we currently have approximately $1.4 million in LEAF, which would be our reserve, but based on our reserve policy, we would need $2.7 million, so we're about $1.3 million The organizational chart, the important part of this is that at the very top, it's the ratepayers. There's a layer between the ratepayers and SAM, which in most wastewater agencies, the ratepayers pay directly to those organizations, but because we are a JPA, those rates actually go to the three member agencies, who then send their appointed officials to the SAM board to decide what's going to happen with SAM. So there is a bit of a disconnect between SAM and its users, but they are the most important because they do fund what we do. We do not have a large organization, we do not have a large structure, we don't have a lot of layers, but we get the job done. We have two functional service areas. One is what we call the JPA operations, which is the maintenance of SAM facilities. That includes administrative services, treatment, environmental compliance, and infrastructure. And then we have our contract services that we provide to the member agencies who participate, and that's where they own the sewer lines in the street, but we come in and we service and maintain those sewer lines and the lift stations, and those are separate by contract, not as part of the JPA. We collect our revenue by what we call assessments, that once the budget is adopted, we then collect from the participating and member agencies. For O&amp;M, they are the JPA assessments. They are calculated through the agreement based on the flow percentage from the previous calendar year. The yellow is Half Moon Bay, the green is Granada, and the lavender is Montero. And what you can see there is one year of average daily flow by month, and where you see those spikes, that's 2016, and that was when it rained a lot. The collection services are by contract. We collect those assessments. In the past, they were collected by percentage of man-hours. In this year's budget, it's the type of service. We segregated out the two types of service. One is dealing with the pipes, and the other is dealing with the lift stations. And the reason for that is that there is one of the participating agencies that has a significantly larger number of those lift stations, so it's a different type of service, and it makes sense to segregate it out. For comparison, should the participating agencies wish to go out and get bids or quotes on the same type of service that SAM provides, to not blend those together. And then new projects. We don't often have new projects, but when we do, such as the recycled water project that we are currently considering, those are assessed to the agencies based on the percentage of the ownership of that new facility, and the member agencies have to vote into the project. We have had projects in the past where not all three members participated, and so the cost of those projects are allocated between whatever the member agencies that are participating and whatever their agreement is for their percentage. Pardon me. So to talk about the first, which is the operations and maintenance section, this includes administrative services, treatment, environmental compliance, and the infrastructure, and the number of full-time equivalent positions that we have. And in this particular case, the O&amp;M has 10.5, which comes to 11 people. One of them is a half-time person. We do have performance measures. Thank you very much. All of these are important, not the least of which is complying with our permit that's required by the state, but also because we are environmentally conscious, we want to prevent what we call SSOs, or sanitary sewer overflows. As I'm sure you're familiar with the newspaper article, we did have one by the Arroyo de Medio Creek, and we take those very seriously. We do not like them, and we do everything we can to try and prevent them and react quickly when we do have them, but our hope is to get to a point where we don't have them at all. One of the ways that we can do that is to look at our infrastructure and make sure that we are replacing it when it gets to a risk factor. In other words, when it gets to the point where failure is probable, we want to make sure that we replace it timely, so that we don't have higher and greater risk and the greater likelihood of having to react to an incident, as opposed to being able to plan for something. From a financial perspective, one should be replacing approximately how much is depreciating out. So as your equipment is getting older, you're spending a like amount to replace the ones that have already aged out. And as you can see, there have been several years where we did not do that. And then there is this coming year where we have a large spike, and basically, that's kind of making up for not doing it for several years, and we now have several projects that cannot wait. The funding for this, as I said, comes from the percentage of flow from the previous calendar year. So this current year's budget that we are in was based on the 2015 year. The year that is coming, the fiscal year that's coming up is based on the calendar year that just finished, which is 2016. And as you can see, over the years, that does fluctuate. It fluctuate because of the type of weather that we have. If it's a very wet year, we have a lot more flow. We have what we call INI, which is inflow and infiltration, which is water that gets into our system because of our pipes that are not sealed. We get groundwater, we get water pouring in from various locations, and so the more rain and the more that INI that we get, the more flow we're going to have. So this can affect the budget. Even if the dollar remained a dollar, just those fluctuations alone would mean that each of those three member agencies would pay something different each year just because of the flow. And as you can see, there's been a steady increase, but of course, in the proposed year, it's significant, and that's predominantly because of those infrastructure projects. So going into this upcoming budget year, we wanted to look at basically holding our own for the regular O&amp;M, and so we made some assumptions, that all the projects that are listed in year one of the new five-year infrastructure plan would be funded, including all three sections of the Granada Forest Main. Originally, we had looked at two of the three sections, but after the last incident at Arroyo de Medio, we realized the temporary solution could not stand for 18 months, and we would need to address it sooner. We assume that all three member agencies will be participating in contract services because there are mutual aid that is given between the employees that are in the contract services as well as the O&amp;M. All budgeted positions will remain filled if they become vacant, that applicable merit step increases will be applied, and that we will be setting aside 1.5% of payroll to fund our post-employment benefits. So as you can see, the infrastructure for this year is taking up the lion's share of the budget. And then, of course, the next two largest sections are wages and professional services. And professional services is large in this particular year because of the infrastructure projects and the engineering and specialized consulting services that we have to have, because we are a small agency and we don't have a lot of staff. And then, to keep our staffing level down, we do contract out, and that's also reflected in the professional services. I'd like to say we have a great variety in where we get our fees, but we don't, and part of that is because, for the most part, we're a JPA who are contracting with the participating agencies to do what we do. So the majority of our funding, 99%, comes from those JPA assessments. Now, we're always looking for opportunities to find a way to partner, to offset our costs, to reduce our costs, or perhaps, in the recycled water project, find a way to turn some of our waste product, whether it be energy or water, to turn it into something else. So either to use it wiser, or to actually be able to sell it to someone who can use it and it not be just wasted out into the ocean or to the landfill. So this is what it looks like, split up by that flow percentage for 2016. Half Moon Bay would be 52%, Granada would be 26%, and Montero would be 22. There's some significant changes. The most noticeable, of course, is the nearly 14, excuse me, 14, $4 million infrastructure increase, which is primarily driven by those three sections of the Granada Forest Main, which are well past their useful life. There are engineering costs and other specialty costs for consultants related to that. We also have the normal increase in wages and benefits. Calpers has not gotten any cheaper, unfortunately, no matter how much we ask them to. The various agencies that we belong to, where we have professional memberships and certifications, they usually have increases as well. We have increases in our insurance premiums. We do a really good job of doing our best to keep those costs down, but we do occasionally have claims, and of course, those drive up the insurance costs. And then we've also shifted all general support, that mutual aid, anything associated with the contract services budget, we've shifted out of the contract services and put it into the JPA budget. The most significant challenges for the JPA side are the aged infrastructure, which now has reached a point where it is critical and failing, that we have not set aside infrastructure or equipment replacement funds, so that means, in order to fund it, we have to pass that on as increases to assessments to the member agencies. Cash flow timing for infrastructure projects, usually for O&amp;M, 1/12th every month, and everything works fine, but unfortunately, that's not the way our infrastructure projects roll, so more than likely, we will need a significant amount of cash at the beginning of the fiscal year rather than 1/12th payments. Calpers and OPEB costs continue to increase, and we have a workforce transition issue. Seven out of the 16 employees that we have at SAM already exceed the retirement age of 55 years, and I use 55 years because the calpers formula that we have is 55 years. That doesn't mean that people have to retire, it's just that means they've reached full retirement. Two more within four years can retire, so that would be nine out of 16 could potentially retire in the next four years. Of those, three have been in SAM's service for 25 years or more. So length of service is also an indicator for potential retirement. To go on to the contract collection services, we do this completely separate agreements from the JPA. We have four staff who clean the sewer lines and a total of one FTE that maintains the lift stations. We clean the pipes, we maintain them, minor repairs we contract out. We try to maintain the service-related SSOs, or overflows, at or below the annual average, which is 600, six per 100 miles of pipe for Half Moon Bay, that would be no more than two in a 12-month period. We respond to all customer service requests and emergency calls within 60 minutes or less, and when you think about the traffic around here, think about how difficult that is to do on a sunny Sunday afternoon. We maintain zero lost time due to injuries and accidents. We complete all annual fog or fats, oils, and grease inspections of restaurants. We complete all required safety training and certification training, and we're doing our best to stabilize the cost and the related assessments, so that member agencies have a better job of being able to budget for those costs. For this coming year, as I said before, we're splitting it into two different types of services, so the pink-colored services reflect the representative percentages for the various agencies for the pipe cleaning, and then the sort of bluish color at the top represents their percentage of the lift station maintenance. In the past, it was all combined, and it was just sheerly a percentage of the number of man-hours and who used the most man-hours. So as you can see, it varied from year to year, so even if a dollar was a dollar, it would change from year to year based on just where-- So even if a dollar was a dollar, it would change from year to year based on just where the man-hours were spent. This is a comparison of the three agencies and what the contract service assessments have looked like since 1314 to the proposed. And as you can see, there was a spike in 1516, and that's because we had to purchase a new truck. And because we did not set aside funds for equipment replacement, that caused a spike in the fees. Let me go back real quick. The cost to Half Moon Bay in 1314 was approximately $276,000. In the proposed budget, it's $285,000 just between those years. If you were to look at a normalized rate, that would be a difference of only 3.4%. So I think coming up with a way to smooth out those assessments makes it a little bit easier to budget and a little bit more reasonable. So we made some assumptions. Obviously, everything related to this are the expenses related to providing those direct services. As I said, a lot of the general support costs are in the JPA as mutual aid. The budget assumptions are, once again, that all three member agencies would be participating in those contract services, that all the budgeted positions, those five positions, would remain filled, and if something's vacant, we would fill it, that employees that are able to earn merit step increases would do so, and that we would set aside 1.5% to pay for those post-employment benefits. As you can tell, I'm not really sure why it's stuck in the middle there. There we go. As you can tell, because it is a service-driven service, it's mostly in wages and benefits. Most of what we see is just boots on the ground. We do have a small amount for professional services, supplies and utilities, and just minor miscellaneous expenses. But the next largest section of the pie after the wages and benefits is the insurance. And that's because SAM carries the insurance for sewer-related claims for the member agencies on behalf of them. So these are the insurance premiums that SAM pays and then recovers from the member agencies through these assessments. If we weren't doing the collection system, we wouldn't have these costs either. These are directly related to the pipes in the ground. And as you can imagine, most of the revenue comes from the assessments, and we do the fog inspection fees for the businesses that we inspect. So the assessments break out about 35% for Half Moon Bay, 30% for Granada, and 35% to The significant changes for the collection system contract budget are that we changed the methodology so that it's not just a percent of man-hours, but it's the percent of the miles of pipe cleaned and the percent of lift stations maintained. We shifted all general support costs over to the JPA, and that's basically in recognition of the mutual aid that's given between the two functions. The wages were increased based on the conditions of the MOU. The insurance premiums were increased, which they do every year, having to do with the number of claims and any retroactive premiums. And then the assumption is that we would be building in a replacement fund, and that would be how we would smooth out the replacement costs for trucks and other equipment so that we wouldn't see those spikes anymore. There are some challenges. One of them is the aging equipment and vehicles and not having equipment or vehicle replacement funds. That normally presents the problem of those significant increases in assessments, but by setting aside the equipment replacement fund, we hope to do away with that. Obviously, calpers and OPEB continue to increase for this side of the house, and several of those people that I talked about that are in transition are in this section. So obviously, that would affect our service delivery if those people retire. So even though it's not a combined budget for those two functions, I did want to show you what it would look like if all of the assessments were combined. Half Moon Bay would be about 51%. Granada would be 26%. And Montero would be 23%. And this is what the history of the total assessments looks like. And yes, the last column is a spike, and that's primarily driven by those infrastructure projects, which are critical to meeting the goal of zero spills. But lest you think that's crazy, here's what the comparison of annual peninsula sewer rates are. So on the very far end, it says $302. That's SAM. That's what it costs per equivalent dwelling unit right now for what SAM charges. Obviously, we don't directly charge, but that's if you took our total costs for this current year and divided it by the number of EDUs that are on the coast side, that would be our cost. The light green is Granada. The light yellow is Half Moon Bay. The lavender is Montero at 972. And for Half Moon Bay, I used the minimum charge because it is based on flow. So I just used the minimum charge, which means there are charges that are higher than that. The red is the average of the peninsula sewer rates at $800. If the budget for this year were to be adopted, the EDU rate for SAM would go up to 573, which would still be well below the average for the peninsula. And what's really scary is that Burlingame Hills sanitary district of 1,595 is not the highest. There was another one, but it was so different, it was skewing the average, so I dropped it. And I believe that was Hillsboro. So it sounds like a lot of money, but when you look at where it compares, and most of these agencies are dealing with exactly the same thing SAM is, which is aging infrastructure and failing equipment. And to leave it on a high note, I wanted to point out what SAM's strengths are. What do we bring to the table? We respond 24/7/365 to customer service and emergency response, day or night, it doesn't matter. It doesn't matter how silly of a request if someone says that they think they have a sewer problem. My staff get up and get out of bed and respond. In all the storms that we had, we had staff working around the clock, trying to make sure that we tried to at least minimize if we did have a spill and prevent one if we could. The local employees, most of our employees actually live here on the coast side. We provide the quick response times, and we care about the coast side environmental quality because we live here, too. And I'm proud to say that I'm a Monterin. And when I moved here, I didn't know Montero from Granada from Half Moon Bay. It was the first house that I could afford. And I have to say, my kids go to Half Moon Bay High School. I work here in Half Moon Bay. My chiropractor's in Granada. I drive the coast side all day, every day. And I have to say, I'm already becoming jaded about the traffic, and I wish the tourists would stay home sometimes when I'm trying to get somewhere. But I love the coast side. And the last thing I would want, and I know my staff would want, is to see anything get ruined because it is beautiful here. Employees have a long-term commitment to SAM and to the wastewater industry. As I've said, three of the staff currently have more than 25 years just at SAM. We have one of the lowest sewer rates on the peninsula. All of the field staff hold industry-recognized certifications. That is not true at other agencies. We require them to hold those certifications because we think that that keeps them current in the industry practice. We have a commitment to safety. We have over six years with no lost workdays, and we're hopeful that that will continue. And we have no MPDES permit or air quality violations. And what I like to tell people is you don't smell the plant. And I have lived and worked at plants. You knew where you were near them, driving down the highway. And I was very surprised when I first came here, and I got lost trying to find the plant, and I couldn't even follow my nose. And that is something to say, for sure. There are many plants that cannot boast that. So now I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Just one quick thing. So there are some SAM employees here.
Yes, there are.
Could you stand up and show yourselves?
And they're here on their own time, and they wanted to come and support doing this presentation.
Okay. Thank you. So questions for Beverly from council members. The, I just want to remind you, the action tonight is just receive the presentation. But if you have questions, they're here to answer them.
Not exactly a question, but a comment. I got a tour of the plant, and Beverly is right. You can't smell it. It's wonderful.
And we give public tours, so if members of the public are interested, they can call and make an appointment, and we'd be happy to show them around. We do a lot of work with the high school biology programs. The high schoolers do come down and do get to see and tour the plant and get a better understanding. And it's not just the treatment process, it's water quality as well. And so it really helps them put it into perspective.
Highly recommend the tour. It's really eye-opening. Yeah, it's a good education. Okay. Sign them up. Vice Mayor Penrose.
Yes, thank you, Beverly. That was a great presentation. Can you, very quickly, because it is getting late, but give us a little idea about where we are with the recycled water program?
Yes, we just actually had our joint recycled water committee meeting with CCWD last night, and we are moving forward. We've received the initial financial analysis of what the project will cost. It is within the range that we had hoped for. We are waiting for the second half of that, which is the financial feasibility study, which should be done in mid-May. And we are starting to work on the terms of agreement between CCWD and SAM.
So if there are no further questions, I think we need to move on. We still have several important items on the agenda. Thank you very much, Beverly.
Thank you very much for your time.
Great presentation. So the next item of business is formation of the City of Half Moon Bay Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee.
Madam Mayor, if I might suggest a process that you and I discussed earlier, we've had, I've had questions from a couple of other council members. And with this item, as you know, there are several categories that were established by which we, the council would like to make some appointments, and I'm trying to find the item myself. But perhaps we, the council would like to entertain essentially going down the list of the categories and then having a council member make a recommendation for those seats
We have a brief presentation, and we'll get right to your list. So establishing a bicycle pedestrian advisory committee is before you tonight to adopt a resolution, adopt bylaws for the B-PAC, and to appoint up to six applicants, and we can talk about that relative to the categories, and then to also confirm the Cabrillo Unified School District Representative, which is, you already heard her speak tonight, Carleen Oh, you did do it. So let's look at the list, and you'll see why. So let's pop down to number seven, and you'll see how we were getting to that. We don't believe we have a youth representative in our application pool at this point, and thus, we will continue to work on that. And Carleen has also offered to help. It just, it just might take a little bit of time to find someone who can do that. Maybe even at the beginning of the school year will be more appropriate. And then we have these three specific positions, the school district representative, and then next week, both the planning commission and the Parks and Recreation Committee to be a commission will be asked to appoint someone. So that's why we get back to the six. You've had quite a few applications, the willing-to-serv forms are part of your packet. We do want to note, unfortunately, one of the applicants accidentally submitted a blank form. That was Kristen Kohler. She realized that and notified the city clerk. And so we don't have more information for you about Kristen, and I'm sorry about that. But you have, in your, in your staff report, all the names, and we try to identify their interests based on their application form, but we also recognize that you very likely know some of these folks. So in sum, before you get to it, again, we'll go back and work on having the youth representative. The bylaws are part of your motion, your action tonight. They were structured off of your operations as well as the recently prepared Parks and Rec Commission bylaws. The B-PACs, we're calling it the Bike Pedestrian Advisory Committee, the B-PAC, will, in the near term, will really have oversight of the bicycle pedestrian master plan, and then we'll be shifting over into complete streets. We can imagine a monthly meeting during this first year, and then possibly, hopefully for their sake, backing off to quarterly. And we would look at a four-year term. We would really like to have them start in May, even if it's not a full committee, because we are trying to have a kickoff with the master plan that's associated with this. And that's our report.
Councilmember Kowalczek, you had a question.
Yes. So just wanted to make sure that this group is required to make the standard Form 700 filings and declarations. Is that correct? Thank you.
So process. So I think what we could do is go around the table. Are you going to have us pick by category? Is that, or can we do it just? Okay. All right. So we're going to start at this end of the table and then move around here, and I'll nominate last.
Bill Murray. Is that what you mean? Are all of them?
No, just one. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Nomination is approved.
Could I just ask, for the purposes, if you haven't, if you've identified where they, you think they fit, that would be the easiest one, easiest way to deal with it?
Yeah. I think we can assign them. I happen to know what he is. He's an avid cyclist. Okay. Well, he identifies himself in the thing as an avid. Doesn't matter. Councilmember Kowalczek.
I nominate Adrian Etherington, who is the executive director of Sustainable San Mateo County and an avid cyclist, commuter, walker, community at large member.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Nomination is approved. Councilmember Kowalczek has asked for discussion.
I just want to raise an issue. I think we should pause on this nomination, given the current litigation with the gentleman named and the accusations, and potentially putting that person in front of staff. I would like to insulate staff from that until that matter is resolved. There's current legal action against the city. Mr. Ullman is named pretty extensively in that, and I don't want to create an uncomfortable situation with staff.
I actually think that that's reasonable at this time, but it's, it's up to councilmember Rarbach if he wants to proceed with a, with a vote.
John Ullman is not directly involved in the litigation. He was named as a third party. And I know he's an avid cyclist and a commuter. I've seen him around, and he's very interested in helping our community. So I would not withdraw my nomination of him.
No discussion?
Just that I won't be able to support it. I think it's inappropriate, given the current litigation. Perhaps a different time, different committee, but not while this is active.
All in favor of the nomination of John Ullman, say aye. Any opposed? No.
No.
Dr. Penrose? Dr. Penrose? That nomination fails four to one. Councilmember Rarback, would you like to make another nomination?
I nominate Michelle Dragony.
All in favor of this nomination, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nomination is approved unanimously. Dr. Penrose?
Yes, you just stole my nomination.
I'll nominate Mario Rendón. Rendón.
Rendón.
No, it's Rendón, that was misspelled.
Oh, misspelled, oh.
Mario Rendón.
All in favor say aye? Aye, any opposed? Nomination, nomination is approved unanimously. I'd like to nominate Elizabeth Brown.
Need to be recused, that's my sister, so I'm going to leave the room while you vote.
Okay.
If I can get out of here. How do you get out of here?
All in favor of Elizabeth Brown, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Not hearing any opposition, we want to recognize that Vice Mayor Penrose recused herself, so the, the vote is four zero. Or four, is it three? Okay, four zero, all right, that's good. So, are we at six yet?
One, two, three, five.
Okay, so, councilmember? Yeah.
Welcome back. Yeah, you can hear me while I'm out there, you want me to do it?
So you get another vote, another nomination, I mean.
Yeah, Danny Freezer, Senior, get that perspective.
Is he the person who doesn't live here yet?
Yeah.
Yes.
I'm not sure that that's kosher.
Yeah, that's fair, that's fair. All right, let's go with Paul Gader.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nomination is approved unanimously. Okay. So, maybe we'll just let you assign offline the, the categories, would that be okay? And then we have, let's see. Do we have to make other steps here? We have to approve the bylaws? Let's see, let me move this up. Yes, so we, we need a motion to establish, well, you can read the recommendation as a motion, yeah.
I'm sorry, I just want to make sure that 700 requirements are in the bylaws?
They are, actually.
Okay, got it, thank you.
Yeah. So if someone could make a motion, read the recommendation and provide a second?
So, I recommend to adopt the resolution establishing a bicycle and pedestrian advisory committee as a new advisory committee, adopting bylaws for BPAC, which is the Bicycle and Advisory Committee, appointing six individuals from those submitting willing to serve forms, directing the Planning Commission and Parks and Recreation Committee, and we did all that.
Well, no, we're directing the Planning Commission and Parks and Rec Commission to appoint one.
Oh, I'm sorry. Directing the Planning Commission and Parks and Recreation Commission to appoint one, she's right. BPAC representative each from their respective memberships and confirm and appoint Carleen, let's see, Fodenhour as the Cabrillo Unified District BPAC representative.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Eisen?
Yes.
Councilmember Kowalczek?
Yes.
Councilmember Rarback?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Penrose?
Yes.
Mayor Reddick?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, so we're moving on to item 3C, which is appointment of the Main Street Bridge Advisory Committee.
This looks remarkably similar to your prior item. Thank you Jill, she stepped in and helped me today. So tonight, as indicated in your staff report, the original appointments for the Main Street Bridge Advisory Committee expired. They were 18-month appointments and so those appointments have expired as such. We circulated the notice of vacancies and solicited the willing to serve forms. You have a number of applications, six new applicants and six, six who are requesting reappointment to the committee. This committee again is formed to help staff in terms of overseeing the work and design work and also getting the word out to the community with regard to the Main Street Bridge rehabilitation project and such. Also with this, as a little different with the bylaws, we are recommending that the Planning Commission appoint their representative to the Main Street Bridge Advisory Committee as opposed to you appointing one of them. So that was a clarity in the, in this. Again, we also developed these bylaws, again, similar to in conjunction with the Parks and Rec Commission bylaws, now the BPAC bylaws, and so now we have a very consistent form going. And again, they are also required to file Form 700s as well. And that is a change from the prior requirements in which there was a specific action not to require that. Again, the membership was established by the council at the original point of formation of the Main Street Bridge Advisory Committee some two-plus years ago. We are not recommending any change to this, other than again, the fact that we believe the Planning Commission should appoint directly their representative. Other than that, we're not recommending any change to the membership. And again, you have a pool of 12 applicants to appoint from. Thank you.
We are appointing 10 tonight, the city council?
Nine.
Nine, with the 10th being the Planning Commission.
Okay.
Who will be asked to, to make their appointment.
Quick question, John. Do you please clarify or elaborate on the primary role? You said advising staff. I guess, I just want to make sure I understand the, the role of the committee.
Sure.
The official role.
The official role, and that's actually, if you look at the, the best place to look at that is in the, the bylaws, which is attached to the resolution, which, well, that's the purpose for the bicycle pedestrian. The purpose of the Main Street Bridge, this is right from the bylaws, is to serve as an advisory body to the city council on the design and construction of the Main Street Bridge Rehabilitation Project, including serving as a community sounding board and assist the city council staff in helping define the public education and outreach program.
Got it, advising the council, giving input to the council, not advising staff and directing staff.
Correct.
Correct, thank you.
I'd like to make a suggestion, to make it, to streamline the process. So we have currently six members who were on the committee, who were willing to serve again, that's seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12. Does anybody have any issue with reappointing those currently serving members?
Do we have that listed?
Yes.
Page 112.
The first six are the ones, yeah.
No, the seven, eight, nine, this last six. Seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12.
Oh, I'm sorry, seven, 12 are the existing?
Right. And are willing to serve, continue to serve. So maybe one motion to approve seventh, persons seven through 12 as members of the committee?
I move to approve persons seven through 12 to, to add to the committee.
Maybe mention their names, that would be good.
And I'll mention their names. Number, Ruth Juro Brown, Gee Rabbit, Steve Hyman, Jerry Steinberg, Katie Martin, Dave Crescent.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. So now the job is to nominate just three?
Three.
This time I'm going to start on the councilmember Rarback's end.
For the position of the person representing historic preservation interests, I nominate David Blowie.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? That nomination is approved. Vice Mayor Penrose?
Yes, I'd like to nominate Jennifer Lee Segali.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? That nomination is approved. I'm assuming she would be one of the people in the downtown area near the bridge.
She's a business.
A business person, along with Dave Crescent, that would be the two.
Within 1,000 feet.
No, David is the historical.
No?
No.
David Blowie.
David Crescent is, right.
Yeah. Yeah, he's, yeah, right. Okay. So Adam?
So I heard from Brian Douglas that he really wanted to be on this committee and he gave me some reasons why, but he also wanted his wife Kathleen to be on it as well. So, I'm, I'm okay going with one of those two for the time being and we can talk about the rest later, but so I'll nominate Brian Douglas.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. So we now have a, a Main Street Bridge Committee that consists of Brian Douglas, David Blowie, Jennifer Lee Segali, Ruth Juro Brown, Gee Rabbit, Steve Hyman, Jerry Steinberg, Katie Martin, and Dave Crescent. Okay. So I believe a motion is, more general motion is needed here? Yes, under the recommendation, would somebody care to?
I move that we adopt the revised bylaws for the MC BAC, appoint the nine individuals we've just named, direct the Planning Commission to appoint one MS BAC representative from their respective membership and confirm the appointment of Half Moon Bay Chamber of Commerce and Visitors Authority MBAC representative.
I second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Eisen?
Yes.
Councilmember Kowalczek? Councilmember Rarback?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Penrose?
Yes.
Mayor Reddick?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Yes, thank you. So, let's see. So now we have, have to move to the items that were continued from consent calendar and the first item is 1E, Resolution of Local Support, Poplar Complete Street. And I am going to recuse myself because I live within one block of Poplar Street. So Vice Mayor Penrose, you're going to have to ride herd on the discussion and vote here.
So, we are pleased to, to have the opportunity to, first of all, have applied for this, this funding and to report that the CCAG has recommended moving this forward. This is approximately $1.2 million in, in funding for the complete streets for Poplar. We are, we were informed that we need to do this resolution in order to complete the work and this is basically, because it's federal funding, involved a very Byzantine resolution requiring many, many things. But it basically says that we'll do the, do with the funds if we get them in the right way and take care of it and build the project, so.
Questions?
I guess just why was this pulled, exactly? She, she pulled it and then recused herself?
Because she has to recuse herself.
Okay.
No discussion? Can we have a motion?
You've got to read the motion.
So I move to adopt a resolution authorizing staff to file an application for funding assigned to the Metropolitan Transportation Commission, committing any necessary matching funds and stating assurance to complete the Poplar Complete Street project.
Second.
Hold in favor?
Aye.
Roll call? Roll called necessary?
You just said a voice vote, so it's okay.
Okay, thanks.
Motion carries.
Motion carries, four to zero. We have item 1H, Cal Recycle Payment Programs.
Yeah. So my main issue with this one is, what is it, I think it's $5,000 that we're talking about that we get a year or something like that. $5,000 each fiscal year. So, my goal would be to prioritize this towards Poplar Beach, actually, for the next piece of a recycling center or, you know, bin or whatever we're talking about with the $5,000. But just to make sure, Poplar Beach has so many cans and bottles that currently go in, so to me it's the highest priority of the way to use these funds.
Anybody, is this appropriate tonight on this item to decide how to spend those funds? Is that in keeping with the agenda? It's okay, all right. So, how does the rest of the council feel about that?
Fine.
Sounds like a great idea.
Sounds like a terrific idea to me, so.
With that, I move to adopt a resolution authorizing submission of applications for Cal Recycle Payment Programs and related authorizations.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. So we're now moving on to item 1J, Award of Professional Services Agreement for Preparation of Environmental Impact Report for the proposed Hyatt House Hotel.
All right. Thank you. So just to jump right into this, we want to be very clear that we are not here to discuss the project. The matter before you tonight is a consultant agreement for preparing an environmental impact report. That said, I just want to note for context that the city has been in receipt of an application since 2013 for a project at the site of South Main and Highway 1, immediately adjacent to the Ford dealership. The project proposal has changed somewhat over time and a number of background studies have been prepared, associated with it through different phases of that, that project development, including two biological assessments, one traffic study, a cultural resources record search, and the applicant has also submitted a geotechnical report to the city recently. So the, the key here is with the proposal as it is now for a 147-room hotel with additional other uses associated with it, staff has determined that this absolutely requires preparation of an environmental impact report. So I would like to just note a few highlights about the consultant selection process. I believe that's of interest. The city went out with a request for proposal quite some time ago now. It was posted on the city's bid center and also sent directly to a consultant list. We received 10 proposals from qualified consultants. We divided them between top tier and bottom tier and then we interviewed for the top two. And we have brought forward the proposal from Circle Point to you tonight and noted that a number of areas of focus that we emphasized were about biological resources, aesthetics, and circulation. Thank you. Thank you. So we understand that there were some questions and need for clarification, and so I just wanted to highlight a few things, and then draw your attention that Circle Point has drafted a memo in response to those questions. I believe you have that on the dais before you. You should have something that looks like this. It's three pages. And then attached to that is an errata sheet, which is hopefully very quick for you to see how we're trying to clarify the scope. And also, the budget has been revised to include a listing of the subtasks associated with the biological work. And so let me just note a couple of things about that very quickly. So the biological resources portion of this proposal is almost 10% of the scope of the entire EIR consultant agreement. The wetlands delineation component is part of the scope. It is not an add-on. I know the language made it a little bit awkward, but that is included in the budget, and you can see that in that budget attachment. An additional plant survey is also included because although there were two previous studies, they were all done at different times of the year, and it's important to be in season with that. This will now be, if this is approved by you, HT Harvey would essentially be redoing everything, and they will be the third firm to look at the property. Also of note, I don't think there were questions on this, but I just want to note that the circulation component of this proposal, the subconsultant is W Trans. W Trans is proposed to actually evaluate the DKS work that had been done previously, but in fact noted areas where it did not conform to the full scope required in an EIR, and thus, the original scope of work from Circle Point was on the order of $163,000. We agreed with W Trans' assessment, and asked Circle Point to add in that additional work by W Trans. It increased the scope by at least $10,000. And you can see the total scope is in the 180s at this point. And that was from negotiations with the consultant to have more scope than was originally scoped. So this will be a new study with a new consultant on that topic area. Then with respect to aesthetics, there are two consultants who are proposed to be subconsultants to Circle Point. One would focus on very detailed modeling of the proposal, and we can also include modeling of alternatives. The other consultant has different expertise, and they would do night lighting and glare studies, which is, we believe, the community's incredibly sensitive to, and that needs to be done as part of this assessment relative to aesthetics. And then cumulative analysis, we understand that, you know, a lot of these scopes for EIR show a whole section at the end about how cumulative assessment will be prepared. The way Circle Point constructs their proposal, as well as their document, is cumulative assessment is included in every topic area as they go along. And so it kind of got lost in the upfront piece of their scope. So we just want to assure you that it is there, and give you a moment to just take a look at this document that we provided, and we also understand there's probably some public comment. And we're here for fielding questions.
Okay, I'd like to suggest that we start by hearing from the one public member who wishes to comment, and then bring it back to the council. We might want to take a couple of minutes after this to take a look at the memo, just so everybody's clear on what it says, since it was just delivered this evening. The commenter is Dave Shore.
Good evening. Thank you for being here for so long, again, as usual. I thought I knew what I was going to say when I stood up here, but comments and things I heard earlier in this meeting changed, I guess, what would be a preamble for this. The presentation from Jill about what San Mateo County is looking at for 3.5 feet of sea level rise, Mr. Reagan's presentation of his property woes, these are very, very direct manifestations of sea level rise, coastal erosion, and flooding that we deal with here in Half Moon Bay. Those effects are the direct result of climate destabilization, which are the direct results of greenhouse gas emissions from human activities. This project, as proposed, will increase the room count in our town by 25% in the hotels. It's 100,000 square feet. No matter how the developer wants to spin it, this is a greenhouse gas emission factory. If we want to not be complicit in the very factors which are causing significant problems for our residents of this town, and the entire region, and the entire globe, we need to reevaluate the way projects are evaluated. We need to reevaluate zoning regulations, codes, and implicit assumptions about future development. Because we are complicit in fouling our own nest by allowing future development which is going to create greenhouse gas emissions. People have property rights. That has to be balanced against the common good. And I mean this in a very global sense, but you guys are the decision-makers here. Every community needs to be involved in averting catastrophe. We're going to feel the brunt of it before anybody else. We're on the front lines of it. I implore you to look at every development project here through that lens. That said, this product also needs to be looked at in the context of the putative benefits, which the developer has said will accrue to the town, $800,000 a year in tax revenue. From the city's own budget document of this year, the city has a $3.2 million surplus in general operating, general fund, and quote, "The general fund budget is also projected to have a continuing surplus for the upcoming years on the order of $2 million per year." Viewed in that context, the $800,000 of tax revenue proposed by this developer needs to be compared to the potential detriment to ourselves globally, as well as to the community in terms of impacts of traffic, visual resources, and everything else. We are not in a position where we are scrabbling for every tax dollar. This is elective tax income for this city. There is adequate money in our budget and our current revenue stream from existing infrastructure generating tax revenue. This is not a project that we need to do. This is the largest private, single-footprint project since the Ritz in our town. It needs to be considered very carefully. So that brings us to the EIR process, which is a step in this. Bear in mind everything I said. I have a lot of faith in staff that I've gotten to know over the past couple of years. I believe that the consultant proposed was selected in good faith and will do a great job. I need to go a slight bit over and point out that in other EIR processes that I've been involved in, we must be very, very careful, no matter how well-intentioned everybody is here, that EIR consultants have been seen to become project advocates and cheerleaders. That must not happen here, because that will lead to litigation. This must be an objective assessment, thorough in every regard, using SEQA as a document which is protective of human health, the environment, and the community's interest in the environment, rather than SEQA being a document to write a report around to allow project to go forward. Thank you for your time.
To Mr. Shore's point, an EIR is a disclosure document. That's what SEQA is all about. And I have to say that it will be important that they look closely at greenhouse gas emissions. I don't think we did as robust a job as we needed to on the circulation element. And we're going to have to look at these cumulatively. Part of the problem we have doing that is, we haven't done, you know, a greenhouse gas inventory yet. We don't have a climate action plan, so it's very difficult to assess. We don't have a baseline against which we can measure the greenhouse gas impacts of new development. And, you know, I think that's a problem. So at some point, we're going to need to address that in order to qualify for grants for, you know, alternative, you know, energy projects, transportation grants. You know, the state's been pretty easy, no compliance with SB 375, kind of, you know, voluntary. Just look at the new Transportation Plan 2040 the county approved. Barely, I don't even think they mentioned greenhouse gas emissions. So that's going to have to change. But that said, we need to bring it back to a discussion of the scope of work. And you had a?
Thank you. I wanted to present one other item, and our speaker reminded me of that. It's really important to staff in our process in how we put this RFP out, and just want to be very clear. Our project applicant is here, in case you have questions for him. Mr. Jameson is here. But Mr. Jameson has not been involved at all in this process, has not met any of the consultants, and has not had any influence on that. And our intention is to maintain that separation all the way through. Mr. Jameson gets to pay for this project, for the CIR. But this is a city agreement. This is your consultant. This is us managing the contract on behalf of the city. And I just, I think it's really important for folks to know that.
Thank you for that. That is important to know. We do have this memo. Have you had a chance to look at it? Would you like a couple of minutes just to peruse it? I only have one comment about it myself at this point, but. Okay. Councilmember Rarback.
Jill, is this in the coastal appeal zone? Do you know?
My understanding is that it is not. We talked to Coastal Commission staff about this just a few weeks ago.
Thank you.
I'm guessing unless Escha is found, right? Then that becomes an issue. But, yeah. Any other questions for staff?
So we have a history of using Circle Point before?
Circle Point worked on the negative declaration. It was a mitigated negative declaration for the circulation element a few years ago.
Did you feel like the information we got from them on that project was sufficient?
They performed to the scope that they were provided, and they went above and beyond on one item that is unforgettable to me, because they prepared a response to comments, which is not a requirement of a mitigated neg-deck. And that is something that you really only do with an EIR. And we had so many comments, they undertook it as a professional responsibility to do so. And they answered every single comment professionally, thoughtfully, and never used the language "comment noted." And that's really important to my kind of practice. Yeah.
So the only other thing on the errata sheet, where they talk about the wetland delineation, I still see additional wetland assessment with delineation if needed. So the words "if needed" trouble me, because, you know, I think we have to do a coastal act wetland assessment. So I'm not sure what that is actually saying. It kind of reads almost like it did in the original staff report. So I'm just trying to make it clear what we're expecting here, and that is.
Sorry.
It's a must. It's not a.
We'll strike that.
Yeah.
Yep, okay.
Other than that, I have no other comments. Any other questions?
I guess I have another question about the, there's the portion about aesthetics. It's hard for me to understand exactly what they're undertaking, because I haven't seen the aesthetics of the building itself. So are they, and the lighting that you talked about, like, I haven't personally seen any of this information. I don't know how they will have an understanding of it.
So the way, so there's two pieces. The typical aesthetic evaluation that you'll see in an EIR will, at this point now, is, we used to call it a photosim, a photo simulation. And the visual experts would go out and take very high-quality photographs, and basically have them set to the grade, almost like a surveyor would, and then utilizing project plans, in particular if they're at the CAD level, set the building into the photograph from different sightlines. The sightlines need to be chosen carefully. We look for the absolute biggest impact, probably the most unattractive or imposing view we can to present that, as opposed to the prettiest side. We're going to show it as it's proposed, yes. So it should be a very realistic perspective of what is proposed. Now, the light and glare analysis is going to, I don't have a lot of experience with this. I've looked at what was proposed, and we actually, we asked for it. We didn't completely know what we were getting ourselves into, but we knew that we needed it. And so we are going to spend some more time talking to them as they develop it. And that's, we would like to see more examples of their work, and we will select an approach that we think is most appropriate here.
So let's pretend that the project changes in scope or size. You know, how much does that matter with the, do we then need to get a new report? Or how does that work? Or just kind of walk me through that process? Because I don't see the project going through the way it currently is.
Okay. So there's a couple ways to think about that. So before we begin to evaluate the project, we need to absolutely confirm with our applicant that that is their finally a proposed project. And that will be evaluated all the way through, unless they change their mind as they go, and then we have to revise the scope, you know, and do some things over again. Now that said, part of the SEQA process includes the evaluation of alternatives. One of the things I really liked about this consultant was their approach to developing project objectives as well as alternatives in support of the city's perspective. They see this as, the developer's project is the one that gets this evaluation, but the city's objectives are going to help us define what alternatives could be. And I think you saw in the scope that there's a range that we suggested at this point in time in, you know, very general terms. A, you always have to do a no project. That's required by SEQA. And we like to do an alternate location discussion, at least, which is an interesting alternative. We are suggesting a different land use be studied. In this case, we've heard community members talk about residential, so we would consider residential use. And then we look at a reduced-scale project, because we need to find an environmentally superior alternative. And a reduced scope project, though, could be reduced in different ways. So we cited reduced massing, as well as reduced, which could be the whole footprint of the project, or just reduced height, reduced square footage. There's a lot of different ways to approach designing a reduced-scale project. That is something that staff wants to work on with the consultant in particular. Does that answer your question?
So let me, so let me just, so just to say this. We start with what we believe is the project that is the most potential impacts. I don't like to call it the worst case, but we can call it the worst-case scenario. And then you work your way from that point. And the reason we do that is that generally, we don't have to look at major scope changes with the EIR, because everything you're looking at ultimately is reducing the impacts and implications of the project. So we sort of start at that maximum point, and we work down from there. So I think that's part of the issue that we're working through.
Excellent explanation. I just want to emphasize, though, that having the project description is really important. It's like the kernel. Everything else, you know, comes out of. So that's where a lot of hard work is going to be, and that's where the public will want to be involved. It's kind of, I guess it's part of the scoping meeting, but then they'll take that information and, you know, create a draft project description. That's where the rubber starts to meet the road. What is it we're analyzing and evaluating, right?
Yeah, so my worry is possibly, yeah, and I hear what you're saying, is putting the cart, you know, before the horse on this one, right? I don't know if we, I mean, it's kind of weird. We haven't talked about the project enough for me to understand that if we move this piece forward, then how do we then make changes? But it sounds like we're able to do that.
Well, things sort of go hand-in-hand, too. Like, you're on parallel tracks. And the information from one, you know, can feed the development of the project and vice versa. So it's, you're not doing them sequentially. You're doing portions of them sequentially, but. Councilmember Kwalczek.
So my perspective is it's a parallel path, but also that this, some of the, can you turn off, please? I'm getting feedback. Thank you. So.
Did you want to comment?
So. So...
Yes.
So the...
The project. We're talking about the environmental...
My comment about the project is that that is the risk of the, of the project developer. And, and so if they want to put forward a great design, if they want to work with the, preview that with members of the community and members of the council, and put together a, a project kernel, that's up to them to do. If they want to put together something terrible, that's up to them to do. That's not for us to decide. So it's that work of the individual to put forward the project that they think will best serve the community, but getting input from people that will be helpful. Other comment I have is, I really don't appreciate the greenhouse gas factory comment. I think it was inflammatory and a bit silly. And then the last comment is on the, the revenue component of this, that we do have more than $30 million of unfunded capital projects just waiting for us to, to do as well. So a couple of related answers.
Okay. So the recommendation is to adopt a resolution. So if one could make a motion and one make a second, we can move this meeting to a conclusion.
A move to adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a professional services agreement with Circle Point consultants for the preparation of an environmental impact report for the proposed Hyatt House Hotel.
I'll second.
Okay, I'm going to ask for a roll call on this.
Councilmember Eisen?
Nay.
Councilmember Rarback?
Yes.
Councilmember Kowalczek?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Penrose?
Yes.
Mayor Reddick?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. So we have a couple of housekeeping items. And then we're almost there. So city council reports. Does anybody have anything they'd like to report about meetings they've attended past tonight? I think that's a good idea. Okay. Items for future discussion, possible agenda items. I did hear one tonight. Mr. Reagan asked for us to consider a letter of support from the city for their CDP application.
Do we have a staff opinion on doing something like that?
I, I think we could bring something forward to the council. We would be careful in terms of what it is we are recommending or supporting, but I think generally, in support of trying to reach resolution to help protect the properties is a good thing.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, if it comes down to, are we going to support a seawall? You know, I don't know. That gets, that gets into the weeds, but, but yes, the staff will take a look at that. He sent a package of information, but maybe at the, well, he said the May 16th meeting would be optimum, so we have time to, to look into that. And then I would also like to get something on the agenda for the May 2nd meeting, a discussion of the, the county's transit report. And Ms. Christine Tucker has volunteered to get a staffer over here to present on that. I, I think we're going to want to have input into that report about, you know, what we'd like to see, so if we could schedule that.
Do you see that as a presentation, a community presentation, or similar to what we did with SAM perhaps?
Yeah, I'm just thinking of like a SAM-related, you know, presentation about what the report, you know, is saying. But I want us to have room to direct staff, you know, to take certain actions, whether it's to, you know, provide certain input in a letter, or something like that.
So I'm happy to do it. I'm looking for, I'm trying to do communication by eye here. I, I've not read the information, so I don't know how far along we are, how much analysis we have to do in order to be able to respond to you by the next meeting. That's my only concern.
So I'm not, I can't remember what they said was the deadline for commenting. You know, if there's still plenty of time, we could have a presentation on the second and then decide what to do after that. Would that be good for everybody?
My only concern is that presentations often are one-directional, and I want to make sure that if we have direction to give to staff after this agenda item, we are able to.
Mayor and vice mayor will work with the city manager on that, okay? I, I agree with you. I don't think we want to lag behind and not get any input into the report. So if we can get straight in the deadlines and what our options are, that would be great.
I have a comment about this presentation and future presentations to the council. I would recommend that we offer a three, five, and 10-minute option to people that give presentations to us. And then if we need something more than that, that we can have a study session, so that, so that the presenter has an expectation coming in.
That's a really good idea. 20 minutes is too much. Okay. Does anybody else have any possible agenda items they want to discuss? Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. This meeting's over. Thank you.